Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bellevue City Council Meeting. It is Tuesday, December seventh, two thousand twenty-one at six P M. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would stand for that and then remain standing for the invocation. Maybe we have Pastor William Johnson in here. Actually, if he doesn't come forward, we'll have a seat.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't see the pastor here, so we'll just get right into business and hopefully last meeting's invocation was a strong one. Call the meeting to order. Susan, or Susan, would you take roll call, please?
Councilwoman Stinson.
Here.
Councilwoman Cook.
Here.
Councilwoman McCaw.
Here.
Councilwoman Preister.
Here.
Councilwoman Burns.
Here.
And Councilwoman Welch.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item four is the Open Meetings Act. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item five, Approval of the Agenda Consent Agenda Claims and Advisory Committee Reports. Five A is Approval of the Agenda. Motion, Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to make a motion that I'd like to make a couple amendments. I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch, and Councilman Cook has an amended, amended agenda.
Should I make this one amendment or two? I'd like to make an amendment that we remove item thirteen A at this time. And I'd like to make a second amendment to remove, to move fourteen A to right after item seven on this agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Cook, second by Welch to amend the agenda by removing thirteen A and moving fourteen A to right after item seven on the agenda. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
Councilwoman Preister, you sure is going through.
Now it is.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. We have a motion by Cook, second by Welch to approve the agenda as amended. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item five B, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Stinson?
Make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Stinson, seconded by Burns to approve the consent agenda. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item seven, Special Presentations. We have none this evening. Takes us to fourteen A from the amended agenda. Request for site plan approval for lot two, Fontanel replat one for the purposes of rebuilding an eleven-unit apartment building. Applicant Mark Sandsford, Sanford. General location, Forest Drive in Hackberry Court.
Mayor, hi.
Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion at the request of staff that we table this till December twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one at six P M.
I'll second that.
So, motion by Cook, second by Welch to table fourteen A until the December twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one meeting at six P M. Any comments or questions?
Did we miss item eight C?
No, because this is right after seven.
Okay, okay.
But thank you for trying to keep me straight.
Oh, that's all right.
So, motion by Cook, second by Welch, please vote.
Second here. Now it should be coming. All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item eight C, Election of City Council President for two thousand twenty-two. So, I need a motion. Well, I need a nomination, I guess. Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion that we have an election for the city council president for two thousand twenty-two. No, we need to approve the item and then have the nomination, don't we?
I don't think we've done it that way.
Okay.
It's already on the agenda as an election.
Okay, so you want me to make a nomination. Okay, so I'm going to carry that as well. I'm going to make a nomination that we, I want to throw in Paul Cook's name for city council president for year two thousand twenty-two.
I'll second that.
Motion by Welch, second by McCaw, but is there any other nominations?
I didn't think hers was a motion. I think she was just nominating.
Good, all right. Nominated, second, second on nomination. Any other nominations?
If there's any other nominations, just say the name. And then we'll need a motion to elect him.
Okay, hearing, no other nominations. Do I have a motion on the floor? Councilwoman Welch?
I'll now make a motion to elect Paul Cook as our city council president for the year two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
So, I have a motion now by Welch, second by McCaw to nominate, to elect Councilman Cook as president for two thousand twenty-two. Any comments or questions? To accept? Never, never mind. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Okay, thank, Councilman Cook?
I just want to tell everybody, thank you for your support. I think this city council, and I'm not just saying last year, I'm going to say since everybody here has been on this council. I think this is the best council that we've had since I've been here in moving the city forward, along with the mayor and our city administrator, Mr. Ristall. So, I, it's an honor and I thank you for your support. Let's keep things moving forward. Thank you.
And thank you for accepting. Item nine, Approved Citizen Communication. We have none. Liquor licenses, there are none. Item eleven, Ordinance for Adoption. Third reading, there are none this evening. Takes us to twelve ordinances for public hearing, second reading. Twelve A, ordinance number four zero six two. Request to rezone lot one C, except part for N R D, Palm Tag subdivision. That part of tax lot F one A and part of tax lot J, southwesterly of N R D, taking and tax lot F one B and part of tax lot H, all located in the southwest quarter of section eleven, township thirteen north, range thirteen east of the six P M Sarpy County, Nebraska, from B N H to M L for the purpose of industrial development. Applicant is Zappo LLC. General location, Fort Crook Road South and Fairview Road. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero six two, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article three of ordinance number thirty-six nineteen, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about Fort Crook Road South and Fairview Road. More particularly described in section one of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you, and I will open twelve A up for a public hearing, and I'll give the applicant the first chance to talk. If you'd state your name and address and I'll let you go.
My name's Kyle Peterson. Address is thirty-three forty, North Hundred and Forty-first Street. I'm here on behalf of Zappo, who's the developer that has the site under contract. I'm happy to explain more. I think the explanation of kind of what we were, or what the intent is to do is, is in place. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions. I would just tell you, in, in general, what's drawn us to the site and hopefully what draws us to more sites in Bellevue is the demand for product like this that quite honestly doesn't exist right now, and it really doesn't exist. Not just in Bellevue, but really in many parts in the metro area. If you were looking for fifty thousand square feet of industrial space right now, and you were looking all across the metro area, you'd have three or four options. For a city that has roughly eighty million square feet of industrial space, it's pretty remarkable. And so I think the location of this, along seventy-five, the proximity at I eighty, the proximity at I twenty-nine, and then ultimately the site itself was what drew it, what drew us to it. And we hope that this is the first of projects like this that we can do in Bellevue. I'm happy to answer any questions about either the development group or what our plans are moving forward, if anybody has any.
Okay, thank you. I'll leave it for the, go ahead. We'll take questions now. Go ahead, Councilman Preister.
Thank you, thank you. It, it seems like an appropriate place, too. It's pretty sheltered. My question is, it, it said that there had been some infill there already, and it's in the area of the creek, the Papio Creek.
Yeah.
And I'm just wondering, in terms of drainage, Bellevue being low already, and we keep wanting people upstream to put dams and do things to mitigate flooding. Could you just explain a little bit about absorption and additional runoff from the footprint?
Just as far as the site itself?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that's been done to the site since the current owner owned it is it's actually been brought up roughly ten feet in total. So, I mean, they've taken fill from other spots as a part of this. We went and did a soil survey and the entire thing, and what came back was, in our opinion, very positive as far as what the soil itself is. You know, we haven't and, and won't go through the platting process quite yet. The intent clearly is to have a drainage component that's associated with it in line with what you need to do for a development like that. That will really align with ultimately, I, I would say, the size of the building or buildings that we would propose to build on that. But one thing that was additionally encouraging to us was that the, well, the current ownerism now had brought the site up significantly, and that, that they've brought the site up is consistent with, honestly, soil conditions that you would want to see. Does that answer your question?
Part of it was what was in the fill and that you had it assessed and that it, it's appropriate.
We did.
And then, in any future development, the plan would include the drainage so that
Absolutely.
that would be mitigated at that time.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, clearly, if, if you're looking to develop it with something that you're going to drive girders down into, you want to make sure that the soil is acceptable for that, and the geotech that we got back was, was something that we were very comfortable with, and the design is something that you would all see at some point before anything would move forward, but we understand that the drainage component would need to be there.
And that answers my question. Thank you very much.
Okay, Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. You made a comment that if you have any questions about the group or the plans.
Sure.
I have a question about the group and the plans.
Sure.
Can you tell us about it?
Yeah, the, the group is, so I'm the CEO of Colliers in Omaha. The group is a component of a few of our partners internally, and then also some local investors that we've used on some other deals around Omaha. We have engaged Civil already, so Civil's been active on it already, a civil firm that has done work like this around. We're in the process of identifying contractor, and I, it, it could be design and contractor as one, but ultimately those two, whether it's two separate companies or one and the same. So, the group really is, as of now, comprised of about eight of us. That from commercial real standpoint, have all been in the business in some way, shape, or form for upwards of ten years. In one case, upwards of twenty years. Have done some development, some private development, but have also been active just in the market in general for an extended period of time. The plan, don't know yet. I mean, I think with anything like this, you kind of look at what the market tells you, and, you know, could it be something that is a larger footprint, that would be a user that, you know, would want something of significant size, call it a, you know, upwards of three or four hundred thousand feet, maybe? Or is it something that you look at and, you know, you build a little bit smaller product that gives a little bit more flexibility for people moving forward? We haven't determined that yet. What we are confident of is that the market tells us right now that there's not a lot of product like this out there, be it in Bellevue or Sarpy County in the west or really anywhere else in the metro area, and it just, it feels like the right time to, to add to what is existing out there.
Kyle, before the meeting, you asked me if, what the procedure was to get this approved tonight. That would, that would take a separate vote by this council, I believe, and I'd leave it up to legal, I guess, but could you give a reason why you would need that?
Yeah, you bet. So, I mean, in an ideal world, we would like to close, well, within the next two weeks. From a seller standpoint, they would prefer to close before the end of the year. From our standpoint, quite honestly, we'd prefer to start marketing it as soon as we possibly can. So, I would make a request to forego the third reading and potentially ask for approval tonight. But under the grounds of, we'd like to close as soon as possible and quite honestly get moving on it.
Yeah, after a public hearing, if that's something that the city council wants to do, it would just be a motion to suspend the rules, waive third reading, and vote tonight.
Okay. All right, any, Councilwoman Stinson?
You said right now you don't have plans laid out for that. Do you have a timeline of when you're planning to start having an idea of what you're going to put in there?
Yeah, I mean, we've got ideas. We, we've got a few options out there. First and foremost, we've got to get water there. So, there's a component, an M U D component that needs to get down there, and honestly, there's a supply challenge with that right now, just from a pure timing standpoint. So, first and foremost, we need to get utilities down there, so we can do everything that we need to do, which we've already had discussions with M U D. And a neighboring group that has a piece under contract to, to work with them to accomplish that. From a plan standpoint, really, what we would like, at least as of now, is a little bit of variety as we talk to people on the front end, because we don't necessarily know what the market's going to tell us. The market may tell us that there's more twenty to a hundred thousand square foot users out there than a larger user. At that point, we would adjust the plan that we have in place right now, and then from a platting standpoint, come back and, and request things. What I don't want to do, or what I would prefer to avoid is to go through the platting process, ask something very specific, and then have to come back and change it significantly. And really, if, if the, the period of time, which at least we've been told, to get water down to that point just from an M U D supply standpoint is what it is, we're going to have a little bit of time anyway.
And the zoning, Tammy, the zoning aligns with what the play and sanitation is doing across the highway?
Correct. It conforms with our future land use map, and also, yes, the play and sanitation recently rezoned across the highway.
Okay. Any other questions for Kyle, Councilwoman Welch?
Um, have you done much business with Bellevue?
I have not, no.
You're in for a treat, because we're great to work with.
Well, I would tell you this. So far, it has been phenomenal. Tammy's been incredibly helpful all the way through the entire process. When we identified this first, you know, there's the initial draw of, we think this can be, there, there's a variety. And one is, I mean, the, the grade change over the course of sixty-four acres is eight feet, which is really rare when you go find a piece of land that's sixty-four acres to have a grade change of eight feet. So, when you look at the things that you would theoretically need to do in order to get into business quicker, and the work that needs to be done on the site, it was minimal. So, first, it was that. The second is, there aren't too many places. I mean, we're, you know, a mile away from thirty-four. We're ten minutes from twenty-nine. We're ten minutes from I eighty and maybe a little bit closer than I eighty. But when you go talk to people about location, honestly, I think it's an area that really, in part because of supply, hasn't been looked at nearly enough as it should be. Because if you're in a business to where you have to move things via one of those two interstate systems or potentially both, pretty good location to be in. So, it's an extended answer to your question. No, I haven't done a lot before, but I hope this isn't the last time that I'm standing before you.
So, Mr. Mayor, he just did the advertisement for us, so we're done.
Yeah, I messed, I stepped out.
Yeah, anything else for me?
No, doesn't look like it. Public hearing is open. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak regarding twelve A? Please come forward. Anybody else wanting to speak regarding twelve A? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. Any other questions? Does anybody want to make a, a consideration of the waiving? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to make a motion. I, I think sometimes we think of an emergency or something, but I can understand where this gentleman is saying that, you know, we'd like to get closed on a property, get it out there, and get it on the market, trying to attract things, you know, businesses. I think there's probably even advantages, maybe, to try to close something before the end of the year. I don't know. I think it's a reasonable request. I know we normally only do it probably if it's more urgent of emergency, but I'm going to make it, and we'll see where it goes. So, I'll make a motion. We, you know, we did the first reading, the second reading is public input, the third reading would simply be a, a vote unless something had happened in between. So, I'm going to make a motion tonight that we approve ordinance number four zero six two.
Do you want to make a motion to waive the rules?
Oh, yes.
To suspend third reading and approve it?
Let me start there. I'll make a motion that we waive the rules, and we we have the public hearing tonight, which we did, and that we vote on the item.
I'll second that.
Okay, so, motion by Cook, second by Welch to waive the rules of the third reading and vote on twelve A this evening? Any comments or questions regarding that? All right, please vote.
I'm just going to do a verbal one. My machine is locked up here. Okay, Councilwoman Stinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cook?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCaw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Preister?
Yes.
Councilwoman Burns?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Welch?
Yes.
Thank you. All voting yes, motion carries.
Welcome to Bellevue.
I'll make a motion.
Make another motion here.
That we approve ordinance number four zero six two.
Sorry, I jumped the gun. I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch to approve ordinance number four zero six two. Any comments or questions on that? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Kathy?
Welcome to Bellevue.
All right, thank you. Item twelve B, ordinance number four zero six three, request to rezone lots one and two, Marquio subdivision replat one, being a replat of lot one, Marquio subdivision, from R E to R S one twenty for the purpose of single-family residential development. Applicant is Sebastian Inzalero, Inzalera. General locations, four twenty-one Bellevue Boulevard North. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
I might be able to here.
Burdenance number four zero six three, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article three of ordinance number three six one nine, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about four two one Bellevue Boulevard North. More particularly described in section one of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you, Shirley, and I will open up twelve B for public hearing, and I'll let the applicant start.
Dan Dole's All Airheart Drift and Associates, three five five two Farnham Street, worthy engineers, and one of my employees, John Menfreaker, who's, I take a son retirement, do some health. I'm taking over for him, but basically, it's a single-family dwelling on the subject property. I'm here to answer questions the best I can.
Okay, does council have any questions at the current time? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you. This is the property that was the Scott House, and you're building behind that? Is that what I'm understanding?
It's on the boulevard. The plan I have shows it right off the boulevard.
It'd be to the south, Kathy. At the south of the existing house. So, it's, it's currently an acreage lot. What they want to do is subdivide, and each lot would still, the lot where the existing house would be, would be about three quarters of an acre, and then the vacant lot created would be about a third of an acre. It's, the applicant wants to split the property so that his father can build a house.
Okay, and that is, the access to that would not be, it's from the boulevard and then down?
Correct, be off the boulevard.
And then, and then down, what, is that Groves? Is that?
No, access would be directly off the boulevard. And there is, there's an as-built that is in the staff report.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant? All right, hang around a couple moments. Public hearing is open. Is there anyone here to speak regarding twelve B, ordinance number four zero six three? Please come forward. Anybody wanting to speak regarding ordinance number four zero six three? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. Third reading will be December twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one at six P M. Item twelve B one, request to small subdivision plat, lots one and two, Marquio subdivision replat, and there's no action required on that this evening. Item twelve C, ordinance number four zero six four, request to rezone lot, rezone north half of the east thirty-five point two feet of lot two and the north half of lot three. Tiller's Hillcrest addition from R S eighty-four to R D sixty for the purpose of duplex residential. Application is B J Justice. Location is two one zero Galvin Road North. Susan, would you read that ordinance?
Ordinance number four zero six four, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska. As provided for by Article Three of ordinance number thirty-six nineteen. By changing the zone classification of land located at or about two ten Galvin Road North. More particularly described in section one of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you, I will open up the public hearing for twelve C, which is ordinance number four zero six four, is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak regarding twelve C? Please come forward, if there's anybody wanting to speak regarding twelve C. Applicant, is the applicant in the audience? Don't see the applicant either, okay, I will close the public hearing. Third reading will be December twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one at six P M. Twelve D, ordinance number four zero six five, request to rezone lot one, Fort Crook addition. From B G to M L for the purpose of outdoor storage, applicant Exarban Fence and Gate, Exarban Fence and Gate, Inc. General location, one two eight zero nine South Ninth Street, Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero six five, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska. As provided for by Article Three of ordinance number thirty-six nineteen. By changing the zone classification of land located at or about. One two zero nine South Ninth Street, more particularly described in section one of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you, and I will open up the public hearing for twelve D, if there's anyone in the audience wanting to speak and we'll start with the applicant. If it states your name and address.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Martin Pelster, twenty-one twenty South Seventy-second Street, suite number twelve hundred. On behalf of the applicant Exarban Fence and Gate LLC, uh, the owner is in the audience, Mr. Robert Malloy. Um, he is a resident of the city of Bellevue, uh, he currently has his fencing business, uh. Uh, facilities are located at thirty-ninth and Heimbaugh in north central Omaha. Uh, but he's bought this property, the subject property. Back in, uh, in July, just to give you a little summary of how we got here. Mr. Malloy needed a larger facility for his business, uh, started looking around, he wanted to find something in the Bellevue area because he lives in Bellevue. Uh, he located the subject property at one twenty-eight oh nine South Ninth Street, uh, he found that to be a desirable location, uh, close to his home. It seemed to, seemed to, at the time, fit his needs in that it was located. And the the use of it appeared to be consistent with the use next door, which is the city of, city of Bellevue's, uh, facilities, uh. Uh, maintenance facilities, uh, he he doesn't, he intended to use the property for, uh, outdoor storage for his fencing materials. He does intend to construct on that, uh, property a sixty by sixty building. Uh, that would be partially used for office space and also for indoor, uh, maintenance and, uh, and storage facility. Um, unfortunately, they didn't check on the zoning very closely and he relied on some others to do that. He, uh, after he closed in, on the property in July, in the middle of July of this year, uh, he, um. Started, he started improving the property, put a, screened in hur- hurricane fence around the property, around the perimeter of the property. Started putting some, uh, some rock materials down, received, uh, shortly thereafter, received an enforcement letter from the zoning department. Uh, informing him that it was not zoned property for his intended use, so that's why we are here, we filed the current application to rezone the property from. General business to, uh, to light industrial, to allow the, the outdoor storage of fencing materials and equipment. Um, I would like to show the zoning map if I could figure out how to use this. It's not working. I don't know, if you can pull the zoning map up.
Phil or Stacy in the back there?
Yeah, I'm not finding the cursor here, I'll see.
Here comes Stacy.
Technologically challenged. Oh, there it is.
There it is, it's not showing on the screen though, that's really weird.
Oh, that is kind of weird. If you could, yeah. I just want to, all I want to do is, is screen, is put it up just a little bit so I can show the subject property. It's not on the screen for whatever reason, it's kind of weird. Sure, there it is, no, that, that's, yeah. Uh, I just, if I could s- show you the subject property.
Just use the mic over.
So the subject property is located right here. Um, and which, this reddish area is, is the B G zoning, general business zoning. Fort Crook Road obviously come down, comes down this way, the the black here and the gray is the, the gray is light industrial, I think the black is heavy industrial. So the property is, you know, located between, uh, the light industrial and the heavy industrial. I I understand that, you know, that your staff report shows that there's a, there was a, the Fort Crook Road, uh, development plan that showed this as being. General business, uh, that's what the city wanted. It's my understanding that the zoning was actually previous, prior to two thousand ten, with this area was actually zoned light industrial. And with the Fort Crook Road development plan, I think it it got changed to, uh, general business, if that's, I hope I'm speaking that correctly, Tammy, but. In any event, uh, so it's been more than ten years since the property's been, was changed from light industrial to general business. And what we're asking for, at least for this property, is that it be rezoned, that this parcel be rezoned, uh, to light industrial. Uh, it is consistent with the city's use of the property right next door, uh, we think that, given the period of time that it was, that has been. Zoned, uh, general business and there's been no development in the area. Seems to be that that's an indication that maybe the zoning is not proper and it should be zoned light industrial to get property developed in this area. Uh, the city's, the city's facilities, uh, for, you know, I suppose, and since it's not a conforming use at this time. Uh, you know, if the city would sell it, I I suppose without putting a condition on it, that'd be, that the. It would be grandfathered, I suppose, unless the city puts some restrictions on it, but, so in any event, we, he's, he's made a considerable. Uh, investment in this area, he's a small business owner, uh, he he would like to use this property. Uh, he, he would like it to see its own light industrial so he can use it for the, his intended purpose. I don't, if you look at, if you look at the area, there's not much development in the area. Uh, and I think i- if you just extend the industrial uses from the north, uh, to this property, I I don't think it's going to be detrimental to this area. Uh, so we would request that you approve the application of rezone the property. Any questions I can answer for you?
Many questions for Mr. Pelster? Okay, no questions right now, so. Public hearing is open, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak regarding? Ordinance number four zero six five, if there is, please come forward. Anybody else wishing to speak regarding ordinance number four zero six five? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the? Counsel, I guess, motion? Oh, sorry, they're reading, any comments or questions at this time? Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor, Tammy, I noticed the planning commission voted to deny. And it appears that area is potentially developable in other ways, the general business. Uh, it's the front door to offered air force base, uh, are. Past problems with the old lounge there are over, it's sitting kind of unused, but I'm just. Thinking that if it is the Fort Crook redevelopment plan and other uses. That if we changed the zoning now, we're being counterproductive to that, could you comment?
I think basically what you just said is accurate, um, that's. How the planning department feels, that's how the planning commission saw it. Um, we do understand the city shop is just to the south, however, the city shop is also zoned B G. And it's in our C I P to have a centralized public works facility, at which time that shop would be relocated. Um, so the idea is that, yes, we still see potential for redevelopment. And we still see that potential in the form, uh, that would be more consistent with the general business zoning.
Okay, I did drive out to the site and the fence that's up there with the lattice in it so that you can't see it, the screening. It does look nice and it, it's okay, but boy, that whole area, if it were developed, all of it, including the shop and our own land. I think could be more of an asset to the base and to the Fort Crook Road plan, I think that was what the. Planning commission and others are seeing too, so, thank you.
I don't want everybody to cringe, but the only other way would be a conditional use or a waiver. I know we've entered in that. There's a lot of legalities going around there right now, so it's not popular.
Right, staff, staff would always recommend against a conditional zoning agreement, um, they are historically very, very difficult to enforce over time. Um, also, uh, open the city up to lengthy and expensive litigation, um, which we are currently seeing now, so. It would be my recommendation that we not, um, enter into any kind of a contractual zoning agreement.
Councilman Prester?
And Mayor, I I thought of that too, or some option, but I was the only one on the council at the time who did an exception. Right on Mission Road and we are still dealing with the litigation on that, I don't want to go down that road again, so. I, even though I'd like to find that option or do a temporary use. I'm just reluctant to do anything like that again, I've been burned once, I trusted somebody, I, I just, we're paying the price now.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, public hearing is closed, that third reading will be December twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one, here in the council chambers at six P M, thanks for coming down. Item twelve E, ordinance number four zero six six, an ordinance to redefine ward boundaries due to the twenty twenty census, Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero six six, an ordinance to amend section nine dash three of the Bellevue municipal code to provide. For revised city council ward boundaries, to repeal section nine dash three of the Bellevue municipal code as heretofore existing. And to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you, and I will open it up for public hearing, so ordinance number four zero six six. Item twelve E is open for public hearing, if there's anyone wanting to speak, please come forward. Anyone wanting to speak, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing and that third reading will be December twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one at six P M here in the council chambers. Item thirteen ordinances for introduction, first reading. Thirteen B, ordinance number four zero six eight, ordinance to request to rezone lots one through ten. And outlot A, Jefferson Place Edition, being a replat. Of lots one through six and part of lot seven through eleven A, lying south and west of Harville Drive. Block one seventy Bellevue together with the adjacent vacated streets, avenues and alleys from R D sixty. Dash O T O to R G twenty-eight dash P S with site plan approval for the purpose of multifamily residential development. Applicant Mercury Property Management, Inc., general location Sixteenth Avenue and Jefferson Street, Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero six eight, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska. As provided for by Article Three of ordinance number thirty-six nineteen. By changing the zone classification of land located at or about Sixteenth Avenue and Jefferson Street. More particularly described in section one of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you, that second reading and public hearing will be December twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one at six P M. Item thirteen C, ordinance number four zero six nine, an ordinance amending and adding a section of Article Seven. Chapter twelve Bellevue Municipal Code regarding outdoor fireplace permitting requirements, Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero six nine, an ordinance to amend Article Seven, Chapter twelve of the Bellevue Municipal Code. By amending section twelve dash one seven two and adding new section twelve dash one seventy-six regarding outdoor fireplace. Fireplaces permitting requirements and to provide an effective date.
Thank you, Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, I don't necessarily need it tonight, but I would like to get some information, direct me, perhaps Annie, to. Where the language that's being stricken, where the new language is, I pulled up the new international fire code. And I can find the new definition, but I I just have failed to find. Because we're eliminating things that I think are important to the fire department, uh, to neighbors, there's a lot of the. Fire fuel, opening shall be completely enclosed by a steel screening. Non-combustible, that's being eliminated, it's not to be larger than three feet in diameter and a height of two feet. That's maybe not as important, but that's being eliminated. The location placed on a stable non-combustible service, surface, get my words out. Not on combustible balconies, tho- those sections of language, is that being? Identified in the new fire code and if it is, could you, at some point, tell me where that is?
I can answer now, if you want me to.
Oh, if you, if you do, I, I didn't mean to catch you off guard, but if you can, yes.
No, so those were permitting requirements that were actually in the definition section, so twelve dash one seven two. And so we're just removing those permitting requirements from the definition section because they're not actually definitions.
Right.
And, and so we added a new section, twelve dash one seven six, so it's, we took that exact language, if you look in the red line version, that's being. Taken from the definition section and it's just added to the new section, if that makes sense.
Okay, when I pulled it up at home, I didn't get the new section, that was what I was wondering about.
Section twelve dash one seven six. It should, it should be attached if you go down, so all that red line is just added to the new section, it should be the same exact language.
Oh, this is fricking.
Yeah, it's stricken out the definitions.
Right. Okay, it just wasn't put in red. It's new language, that's what confused me.
No, well, no, because it's a, the entire section's new.
Okay, I, now I understand, that's why I couldn't follow it, I expected it to be underlined and.
Okay.
Okay, I got it, I'm clear, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so second reading, public hearing will be December twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one at six P M for ordinance number four zero six nine. Item thirteen D, ordinance number four zero seven zero, an ordinance to approve the sale and conveyance of approximately twenty-four point eight five acres of property to Redwood. U S A LLC, Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero seven, oh, zero, an ordinance to approve the sale and conveyance of approximately twenty-four point eight five acres. Of city property to Redwood U S A LLC and Ohio Limited Liability Company.
Thank you, the second reading and public hearing will be Octo- or December twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one at six P M here in the council chambers. Item fourteen, public hearing on matters other than ordinances. Fourteen B, public hearing on the C D B G twenty twenty dash two, twenty twenty-one consolidated annual performance and evaluation report. And I will open that up for public hearing, so fourteen B is open for public hearing, if there's anyone here wishing to speak. Anybody wanting to speak regarding fourteen B, public hearing on C D B G twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. Councilman Price.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask Ms. Highland a question or two, if she would come up. If I'm reading this correctly, as I look through, this is a hundred and two pages, so there's a lot of information. Charts, data, very thorough, and so I want to make sure I'm understanding. It shows a thousand, just over a thousand residents in the area that are low income residents. Of those thousand plus people in those census tracts, it pointed out that there were just over a hundred that were of black heritage. Just over a hundred Hispanic heritage, just a very few, um, uh, in Native American and a couple others. But the vast majority, eighty percent or so, was, were white, low income people that are benefiting from this. Is that how I read it? And that was for both groups?
Yes, and a lot of the beneficiaries, with CDBG money, we can not only benefit an area. So that would count everybody in the area that benefited from the activities, such as Washington Park improvements.
Right.
And also the individuals who benefited specifically, like a household or the individual. And then we get more information based on their, their data as far as household income and raise. So all of that is included in that, that one thousand fifty eight.
Okay, and, and I was wanting to be clear that the two, we had ten that were the annual and then we had seven that were the COVID projects.
Yes.
And that in, those numbers were for all of that?
Yes.
Wasn't just one, but that was the total?
It was, for this year.
Okay, just making sure I got it right. And, and then I wanted to check, about half the money went, more than half the money went unspent, unfortunately. Likely COVID is the main reason, but there were others that contributed. So folks have until, I believe it's the end of March of twenty twenty two, to be able to still finish. But if they don't, there's a process by which the council can approve an extension, I believe. Could you outline what would be entailed there?
Yes, and we understand a lot of the activities, they may face issues in spending their money in the year that is given. They're given a year to finish their project. This year, we did face a lot of COVID delays and then increased cost delays and timelines with construct- with contractors. A lot of them had those issues as well, so if they aren't able to spend them money in a year, we give them the opportunity to request an extension. If they want to request the extension, they have to give us in writing an explanation of what happened, why they were delayed and how they'll get back on track in a timeline for expenditure. So we kind of know, can they get it done in six months or do they need another year? And so they do that before their, their agreement expires, it'll come back before council, so you'll probably see some of those in February. Um, and then we give them an extension based on their information they provided.
Okay, and, and this whole process seems delayed and put back, probably due to COVID also. But we've now got things moving ahead and this report is exceptional, a hundred and two pages with all that data. And getting the feds to approve it is, uh, I think, pretty impressive, so thank you very much for doing all that.
Thank you.
Thank you. No action there, item fifteen resolutions, fifteen A. Resolution number twenty twenty one dash tw- forty four, a resolution authorizing the submission of the uh, consolidated annual performance and evaluation report and authorizing the mayor to sign. Do I have a motion? Councilman Price.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll move to approve item fifteen A, resolution number twenty twenty one dash forty four.
Second.
Motion by Price, or seconded by Burns, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, item sixteen is current business, sixteen B, approve and authorize the mayor to sign sub- um, subordination agreement of, need a motion? Councilman Stenson?
Make a motion, we approve sixteen B.
Second.
Motion by Stenson, seconded by Cook, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, sixteen C, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with J E O Consulting Group, Inc. for professional services for the city of Bellevue's Stonecroft Park Improvements Project in an amount not to exceed twenty four thousand five hundred ninety five dollars. And do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion, we approve sixteen C.
Second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Stenson, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, item sixteen D, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with H G M Associates, Inc. for professional services for the city of Bellevue's M one four six, three two one Harland Drive over Fort Crook Road Bridge Repairs Project in an amount not to exceed thirty six thousand one hundred dollars. And do I have a motion? Councilman Stenson?
Make a motion, we approve sixteen D.
Second.
Motion by Stenson, seconded by McCaw, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, item sixteen E, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreements with AVI Systems, Inc. for the fifteen ten Wall Street Training Room Audio Visual Upgrades Project in an amount not to exceed sixty four thousand one hundred fifty four dollars and seventy eight cents. And do I have a motion? Councilman Price.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll move to approve item sixteen E.
Second.
Motion by Price, or seconded by Cook, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, sixteen F, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Four Seams Academy LLC for the use of Aspen Park Ballfields. And do I have a motion? Councilman Stenson?
Make a motion, we approve sixteen F.
Second.
Motion by Stenson, seconded by McCaw. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, sixteen G, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the first amendment to the interlocal agreement with law enforcement agencies in Douglas and Sarpy Counties dated July seventeenth, two thousand twenty, to include the Village of Boystown. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move we approve at, item sixteen G.
Second.
Motion by Burns, seconded by Cook. Comments or questions? Councilman Price.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, uh, Boystown is a rather small area, I believe. But I'm just, what do they have for a police force that they would like to be a part of this? If you could maybe comment, seems like maybe a security guard works there. I, maybe it's bigger than just the Boystown campus, I, I'm just not sure who Boystown is representing, and I'm sorry, I didn't contact you sooner.
I was gonna say, uh, Chief Dargy could probably answer that a little better than I could. Uh, I know it's for response of all the Douglas Sarpy County for all EMS response. So, but as far as their size.
Yeah, the Village of Boystown actually have a police department that has a chief, and I think they have four or five full-time officers and then a, a few part-time officers that work there. And it's really not so much that we would need them, but it's more that they, they would need us. And so that would just allow us to be able to respond, uh, or anybody in the metro area to respond to Boystown to assist them and have police powers.
Sure, because this isn't just Bellevue, this is the metro.
Right, everybody in, yep, in the metro area, correct.
Right.
Yeah, it, in, initially, they were left out, but, uh, it's actually passed, uh, several of the other, um, entities, uh, processes to add them, we're actually a little bit behind in this. So, um, once everybody agrees and they'll be added in, but like Tom said, you know, we're not going to be asking anything of them, it just makes it all inclusive for Douglas and Sarpy Counties that if we need to share EMS service of any type, it, it's seamless at that point.
Yeah, no, it makes sense, I just.
Sure.
Was not clear on who or what they had for that service, but now, thanks to Captain Dargy.
Yeah.
I now know, thank you both.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Motion by Burns, seconded by Cook to approve sixteen G, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, item sixteen H, recommend approval for equipment purchase and authorize the mayor to sign the contract with Motorola Solutions in an amount not to exceed three hundred and forty one thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. And do I have a motion? Councilwoman Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve item sixteen H as read.
Second.
Motion by Walsh, seconded by Stenson, any comments or questions? Councilman Price.
Thank you again, Mayor, keep doing this. I, I, I'm gonna support this and, uh, basically, I know that you're getting the best technology and the best deal. I'm not having an issue with that, but this and the other technology things. I know all this stuff becomes obsolete way before I think it should. I buy something and I think it should last my lifetime. But stuff anymore, it's suddenly obsolete, so from the taxpayer's point of view, I sure hope we can get some good guarantees and I, I hope this stuff lasts because this is a sizable chunk of change and every time we do these things, it's just another bite out of the, the tax revenue.
Yeah, it's, uh, actually a five-year contract, so almost, almost a hundred percent of the cost is upfront for those five years. So it's actually an average of about sixty six thousand a year for all of the technology. And by moving this item up, uh, Captain Dargy did a great job of, um, dealing with the company and they actually threw in additional technology and cameras, uh, and additional interchange, um, was included in this by doing this before the end of the year. So we're actually, uh, by, some would say, uh, cost savings if we were to purchase all of the technology that they're now throwing in because we're being proactive with it. So they do upkeep the equipment, they stand behind it and they, they will, um, keep it up and running and all of those good things, so. Yeah, uh, uh, very, very confident that this will be a windfall for the city with, uh, what it will bring the police department to both deter crime and clear crime that's out there, so.
And I also noted that in there, it passes some of the privacy concerns and as the automatic licensing is noted, it only takes that license information and it doesn't take other private information, it just gives the officer information. If it's a listed number that they need to take some action on, so.
Yes.
I appreciate the privacy too.
Yeah, it's very, very regulated by the state legislature, uh, on what can and can't be utilized for. Um, we'll hold to the highest standard with that, and like you said, it does not give, you know, reads plates, but doesn't give personal information off those plates unless you can, um, basically go in and, um, justify reasons that you can tie it to a crime and, and it clears itself. There's all kinds of stipulations to it, but, uh, yeah, very highly, highly regulated in the state. We have to report back to the Crime Commission with anything that we do run through the system, so, very regulated, so.
Good, and, and I'm glad I asked the question, I was just kind of a lament that these things are costly and we do them for various departments and we, we do them over and over. But I'm glad I asked because, uh, kudos to Captain Dargy because once again, he negotiated a good contract and it's good for the public to know, we are watching their money and that we're getting the best value and the best deal that we can get on these deals.
Yeah, when he came to us with that information, we, we moved quickly to make sure that we could capture that, that, uh, savings, so.
Okay, thank you both.
Uh, Councilman Price, I sure hope your, I, I truly hope your lifetime lasts a lot longer than five years. You, you referred to that lasting lifetime, so.
Referred to what?
You referred to the, you, you hope the equipment that you buy lasts a lifetime? I hope yours is longer than five years.
Me too, thank you.
Trying to make sure I explain that right. Councilwoman Walsh.
Um, and also, um, Chief or Captain Dargy, either one, um, isn't this equipment, wasn't it used in another other states or other cities that caught a person that committed a crime and, and there was implications that they thought he was going northeast and he went west and this, this type of technology helped find that person, correct?
Yeah, there's other jurisdictions that have it in the state of Nebraska and it's used all across the, the U S. And so we did have a case here locally, um, it was a, a double homicide, uh, where we didn't have really any leads to go on and, and this type of system provided a lead and allowed us to, um, figure out where the, the suspect was at.
Getting ahead of the bad guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, any other comments or questions? Uh, motion was by Walsh, seconded by Stenson on to approve sixteen H, uh, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, item sixteen J, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the city maintenance agreement renewal number five and certificate of compliance with the Nebraska Department of Transportation. And I'll take a motion. Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve item sixteen J.
Second.
Motion by Burns, seconded by Cook. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, item seventeen is administration reports, comments must be limited to the items on the current reports. Monthly reports are given at the first council meeting of each month. November report is attached to December seventh packet, are there any questions on those reports? Or comments? Jerry? All right, we will put them in the record and, uh, there's no closed session and I will take a motion to adjourn. Councilwoman Walsh.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Motion by Walsh, seconded by Price to adjourn, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thanks, everybody, be safe.